All to order, the Budget Work Session Tuesday, July 15th, 6:30 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Coolios?
Here.
Vice Mayor Eisner?
Here.
Commissioner Coolios?
Here.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Here.
Commissioner Banther?
Here.
The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the Board of Commissioners to study issues, gather and analyze information and to clarify questions. No votes are conducted during work sessions. No public comments will be allowed tonight. However, we, public comments will be allowed during the two public hearings that are scheduled for Wednesday, September 3rd and Wednesday, September 17th. Both of those sessions will be at 6:30 PM. So I'm gonna, we're, so what will be, the way we'll conduct business tonight is we will hear from various presentations and then upon completion of the presentations, I will call on each Commissioner for questions or comments. So our first agenda item, number one, would be Mr. Don Bergman from the Budget Advisory Committee. He is the Chairman.
Good evening. The Budget Advisory Committee has completed its annual review of the proposed fiscal year 2026 draft budget. The committee has held four meetings, which included presentations from all departments as well as discussing the salary increase for the mayor and commissioners and the milage rate. Before we touch on that, there was one other item we addressed at our March meeting. Finance Department shared with us a draft proposal they have in terms of modifying the fund balance policy. There's currently two funds that have no policy at all, the Marina and the Golf Course. We thought it was important that everyone have a fund balance policy, so we passed a recommendation endorsing this concept that you'll see when they present that draft policy to you. The committee recommends creating a fund minimum, a fund balance minimum policy for the Marina and Golf Course Funds. At that same meeting in March, we were asked to look at the salaries for the Commissioners and the Mayors. We asked the Finance Department to go out and poll the other municipalities in the county, not just in terms of raw numbers, but also in terms of any benefits paid. At our first discussion after that, we needed some more information. We didn't have a good feel for how many hours are spent beyond the required commission meetings. So after Ron was able to get that information for us, we, we looked at the other cities and municipalities in terms of how they compared us in terms of overall size versus what they're paying theirs, what the difference was between the Commissioners and the, and the Mayor, and we came up with the following two recommendations. The committee recommends increasing the Commissioner's salary to $11,500 per year and the Mayor's salary to $15,500 per year effective October 1st of this year. In addition, we, the committee supports reviewing the Mayor and Commissioner's salary with other regional areas every three years, because I understand it's been a long time since we've looked at it here, so we had that recommendation that it'd be done every three years. And lastly, as we have done for the last four or five years, the committee recommends that the milage rate be kept the same at 5.37.
Okay, I'll, I have really no specific questions. I just want to thank you, Chairman, for all your diligent work and, and obviously as we go through this process, we'll be using your, and referring back to many of your recommendations. So Commissioner Banther, do you have any questions?
Yes, thank you, appreciate that. And I've served on your committee and I have a lot of respect for you all, so thank you. It's a much-needed function. Have you guys looked at any of the plans yet about potential, a debt service and, and that kind of thing that we've been talking about up here?
We have not looked at it in detail. There's been some preliminary discussion, but we haven't looked at any detail at this stage.
Okay, well, we can see what my colleagues say, but I feel when you guys meet again or down the road, whoever does those agendas, we would obviously appreciate your, your input on that, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I would echo that, by appreciation for your committee, I was able to view many of the meetings as well. I had the privilege of serving on that several years ago and that in the past, and I know how important the endeavor is and I appreciate the time and commitment. I feel like a very thorough job was done by your committee and, and I appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Coolios?
Yes, thank you, sir, for your service and volunteering on the board. Did you, did the Budget Advisory Committee have an idea of what they thought that fund minimum balance should be for the Marina and/or Golf Course?
No, we didn't discuss in terms of the specific amount. We just, we thought that all the funds should have a minimum balance policy, so that's why we endorsed those two funds being added.
Okay, thank you, sir.
No further. Vice Mayor Eisner?
Somebody took my question right from me, right before me. That was excellent.
You came over to my seat, so I think...
Mine's, yeah, okay. That was good. That was the lone question that I had. The other thing is, you know, thank you really for your hard work. Nobody asked me how many hours I put in, but that's okay. How did you come up with that? Were you just discussed other locations?
We looked at the other municipalities in the county, the differences between the Commissions and the Mayor and the, and what they, they're based on the size of the cities. We took all that into consideration.
Well, thank you, because I know that's not easy. Nobody up here does this for the money, but you know, I think after so many years, somewhere along the line, it has to change, so thank you for your hard work, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chairman. Let's go to Agenda Item Number Two, the Compensation Study Results, and that'll be our City Manager, Charles Rudd.
How do I make a presentation? Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm gonna go through a little more quickly this time, the presentation we went over with each of you for the, for the pay study. So at your direction, we hired Management Advisory Group to, to look at all of our, our pay classifications, our job descriptions, our organizational structure. Dr. Campbell is here tonight to answer any questions you may have for him. They did a comparison to the market. We chose cities in our area, in the Tampa Bay area, and then we asked them to look at another metro area around Orlando for comparable cities, as well as Pinellas and Pasco County, and then the Onet online service. The study that was provided to you has 13 sections in it, however, sections, only sections eight through 13, we're gonna, are coming through with the budget process for approval. The sections three through six have a lot of policy recommendations. We'll be reviewing all of our policies in the future, so we'll bring those back to you for consideration. The major findings were, they found that our midpoint, or rather, our entry-level positions, we were 13.8% below the market. Midpoint was approximately 9% under-market. We had compression issues, we had, so when someone's been in the position for a number of years and a new hire comes in, they get hired at a similar salary. We had, our existing pay bands were too narrow, and then there were span of control issues, the number of direct reports for the city manager. So this is the, the numbers. We had, the recommendation is a 3% cost of living increase, which is just over a half a million dollars. And then we, anyone, when their pay grades were adjusted up, if they found themselves, we found them below their new pay grade, there was an adjustment to that minimum. And then there was a further adjustment for compression. If somebody had been in their job for like 10 years, there was a calculation to move them into that new pay grade versus if they were fairly new to the position, they would be more at the entry level of, of that pay grade. And then, so that total payroll impact was 5.9% if all positions were filled. Currently, in the draft, there are a number of vacant positions, so we're at 5.37% increase to the payroll. This is the organizational adjustment. You see the three, the Deputy City Manager and two Assistant City Managers, which is how we've been functioning essentially. We've created direct reports for those positions that we talked about with you. And then this is the history, so starting back in 2021, there was a 3% COLA, and then it went up to a 5% COLA. This year, we think the impact, as I said, would be 5.91 if all positions were filled, but right now it's at 5.37. So we feel like it's really in line with historically the, the increase in payroll that we've been experiencing. So overall, we're looking for adoption of the recommended pay ranges, accepting the new position descriptions and the organizational restructuring, as well as the budgeted payroll changes. We've included these changes in the budget, the compensation adjustments and the organizational pay adjustments. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or we've got Dr. Campbell here as well.
Okay, I'll start off the questions. Let me, you know, our, our goal here, I would, my goal, I would suspect the other Commissioners are, feel the same way, is that we obviously want to do what helps us retain good people and we also want to make sure that we have proper compensation to attract new people. So, and this may be a Ron Haring question, but what has been our, our retainage of current employees? Do we, what has been our, are we having issues with retaining employees at, at currently?
Well, I know since I've been here, you know, for instance, we lost our fleet manager to Hillsborough Sheriff's Office, and I believe we've lost our competitors, be the county and other municipalities. And as you mentioned, the purpose is also, our entry level is so low, that I think that's impacted our ability to attract candidates for our positions to begin, because we advertise the range and, and they look at the low end and, and we're just below the market.
I know this is another subject that obviously we'll be discussing at the next Commission meeting, but I understand we lost our candidate that we approved last week for the Public Works.
Yes, we did. She withdrew today.
Did that have anything to do with compensation?
Not that she stated, she stated health reasons.
Okay.
So I don't know if it was tied to compensation.
Okay. So, does this, does this plan give latitude to department heads where, when, when the, when these calculations and this system is applied to their departments, where they feel there is some form of an inequity? Either people getting raises above other people that they feel are more deserving? Is there latitude in this system?
Well, there, there is. In fact, we met with each department director, went over the results, and we've made adjustments along the way. If further adjustments are brought to our attention, that's something, this won't go into effect until October 1st and you, you'll actually approve it in September. So we do have some time, if particularly the Board is interested in some changes, we have time to make those.
Okay, how about merit? Is there any merit pay opportunities?
There, we are proposing a 3% merit, so even though the COLA is only 3% based on performance, someone could get another 3% on their anniversary date.
Okay, so that could help with department heads being able to handle what they appear to be inequities?
Absolutely.
Okay. What about charter officials? What, I saw recommendations on charter officials. Can you elaborate on what some of the recommendations were? And again, it might be Dr. Campbell doing it, but what were the recommendations on the charter officials?
I don't remember specifically those positions.
I saw where they got moved to a different pay category?
We did, we, we adjusted some positions. For instance, we found we had some directors, directors in several different pay classifications. We had assistant directors in several different places. So we consolidated those, so directors were paid comparably assistant directors. We made those adjustments.
Okay, and all those are included in this budget?
Yes.
Okay, and obviously the Board can do as it pleases and could adjust some of those charter officials as well. Okay, thank you very much, those were my questions. Commissioner Banther?
Thank you, and, and thank you for, for doing this study. It's, you know, been talked about for a while, and I think it was long overdue. A few observations to carry on, to continue on with the conversation that you and I had. As far as the, the org chart, I think it's a great idea that we're doing this Deputy's, Deputy City Manager position and the two assistant ones. And I just think, and it's just for purposes of how you literally graphically do the, the org chart, but I do think it's, it still kind of looks odd to me that you have a Deputy City Manager and the two assistants, the two, like, you know, like, you know, assistant city, city manager spots on, on the, on the same plane. And I understand that the assistant ones will not report per se to the deputy unless he's in your, filling in your shoes, but I think something needs to be done to just differentiate that. I'm not sure what it is, but there could be some confusion if, if, if somebody from the outside, I think, looked, looked, looked at this, because typically a Deputy City Manager would sound above, un, un, like, 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 like an assistant, you know, you know, City Manager. I just think there's something we, we should be able to do that helps just clean that up and house somebody wouldn't, would, you know, read that.
Okay.
So I don't really have the answer per se, but if you could think about that, I know it doesn't functionally change anything that they do, but I just think it just needs to look a little bit cleaner, but I think the idea is great, because you have to have people designated in, in your place, and I think the, the city has grown to, to, to the point where you have to have these titles, and I'm glad that, that we're using our existing staff who's very great. As far as the pay scale goes, you know, I was, I was able to kind of spot check a few departments that I could, you know, that I visually know, like, all, 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 all the, all the, all the people in there. You know, and I, and I emailed you today also for that information for who is just receiving COLA, and thank you for that. I do think that the City Clerk's Office needs to be looked at again, and for some of the good questions that, that the Mayor asked as far as compression goes, I know you have some outliers in there, and not just single, single, single good people out, we got people in there that have been there for like 35-plus years. So I do think that, that's, that specific department should be pulled out again and looked at to make sure everything's being, everyone's being compensated, compensated, you know, you know, you know, you know, fairly in there. And also, and we've always struggled with this, when we look at other cities and, you know, our city clerks are not just city clerks, they're also collectors. So it's hard to compare it dollar for dollar to like Dunedin or Oldsmar or like whatever. So I don't know if there is something we could account for that when you're comparing their pay, but I just think that was the one department that I looked at that I thought could use a little, a little more investigating and just to making sure that we are appropriately compensating everybody in there. Certainly, I don't think anybody was, 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 was like overcompensated, but I think some might be, might be under, undercompensated. And then again, lastly also to kind of dovetail off what the Mayor said in relation to, you know, I, and maybe it's just me, but when I was reading, you know, how, where we classified the different charter employees, I, I would think they would be more grouped together, and it seemed like they were grouped with people that wouldn't necessarily match that pay range or job description. And that could be partially my, my like, my like, my like, you know, like, you know, ignorance with this, but, you know, you and I can continue that, that more offline, that's just more educating me on that, but it just felt, it was hard for me to follow, because I always try and read this stuff from the layperson's perspective. And, you know, charter officials, while they're, they're not always like the most paid per se, they're still kind of grouped in together, and I didn't feel like, it just didn't quite, quite, quite make sense to me when I looked at it again after our conversation.
Okay.
So again, if you could relook at the City Clerk's Department, and then as far as the org chart, perhaps adjusting where we have the Deputy City Manager to make it, make a little more visual sense, and then, you know, also making sure that we have the charter employees grouped appropriately in the, in, in this new plan. But besides that, I think it's great, and, you know, we do struggle, we have struggled since I've been on the boards back in, you know, 2012 and on, for, you know, finding good new applicants, and I'm, I'm very sorry to hear that, that this lady resigned, there was a lot of hope for her, I think. So hopefully her health issue gets resolved and we can find somebody like her, so do we have any candidates in like, in like backup to her?
We do, we had an applicant we prepared to make an offer prior to her interview, so we've reached out to him and he has tentatively accepted our offer.
Oh, though he has?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's very good. All right, thank you.
Sure. Commissioner DiDonato?
Well, I agree with what's been said thus far. Certainly charter officials, I think we do need to look at that individually. My two big things are compression, which you've mentioned. I really think that's gotten fairly bad, I don't like the word bad, but it needs to be looked at, it needs to be adjusted, and retention. I, I know, for example, even five, 10 years ago, it cost $20,000 or more just to train and get an officer of the police or a fire operator up and going and certified, getting the certifications they need and whatnot, that's $20,000 cost. And at one time, we were, we were the prep school, if you would. We were training them and they were leaving, making $10,000 immediately more, and, and it's not just those two departments, it was also in Public Works, in P&amp;Z, we had people leave. So I believe in paying people to do the job they're hired to do, and I prefer to keep them here and use their skills and their knowledge of our city rather than not pay them and have them go somewhere else and help those other people to put the time and money in that we did to train these people. So I think it's important that we be competitive and that we look at the, the compression in particular, because there, there are some employees here that have been held back somewhat as far as what they could get somewhere else. So glad to see we're looking at those issues and think we need to continue to look at that annually.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Coolios?
Yes, thank you. City Manager, we got, when I asked for that document and you gave it to me, a lot of that was able to show differences in individual pay rates or pay salary increases. The document we had originally received was, you know, generally within the departments and it included, you know, number of employees, but not directed toward, it was an average of an increase within the department. So I do have some concerns and I'm not willing to support a lot of, you know, the organizational restructure. I don't, I don't personally see a need to have three Assistant City Managers when, if, right now, we've got great people who could do hybrid work, but if these individuals leave, you've actually created three more Assistant Director or Assistant City Manager positions at the tune of, you know, with salaries and benefits, close to half a million dollars, so I don't follow. Well, if Renee Vincent leaves, you know, retires or whatever, you have a Planning Director, and then you gotta fill Assistant City Manager position.
Not necessarily. I mentioned that in our conversation, those, those positions, those three director spots would move under, probably under the Deputy City Manager. We would just be down to two. Wouldn't automatically, so if, if any one of them left, their, their department, director level replacement wouldn't necessarily be in, wouldn't be an Assistant City Manager coming in, they would, so like I say, if Scott retired, the new Fire Chief would be just the Fire Chief, and then I would probably promote one of the other assistants to Deputy and we'd be down to just two.
But then you still have...
I'm just taking advantage of their, their experience and talent here at the city.
But then you still have to fill that third spot.
Just the Director's position, yeah.
Which, at the tune, looking at these pay rate adjustments or increases, they're They're gonna come out to exactly 155,000 on the low end and 141,000 on the low end, but at some point, these three individuals, they're gonna retire, they're gonna, you know, so we have to fill all three.
Not necessarily.
But what's the point in having the organizational chart to have three if we're not gonna fill them?
Well, that's one of the reasons that they're hybrid positions, so they're keeping their, their department-level responsibilities, then if they were to retire or otherwise leave, we would fill that Director spot, but we would, we would just reshape, the advantage of the three of them now is their experience and their knowledge of the organization and institutional knowledge, and, and so we're taking advantage of that by, by promoting them and encouraging their, their development, but then if they, if they retire or move on, we just restructure, we, we'd be down to two then, and we'd move those, we'd distribute those Directors under other, either myself or the other remaining two. We're taking advantage of the, of the scenario we have, not institutionalizing individual new, three new positions that are, that just serve as assistants and a deputy. They, they still manage their departments, and we're adding two direct reports to each of them.
Yes, I understand City Manager, but when you go to advertise these new positions, when or if these people retire, you're gonna advertise it as what, an Assistant Deputy slash Planning Director? How are you gonna advertise something like that?
Just Planning Director, Project Admin Director, or Fire Chief.
Okay, and then what about, we're not gonna have any, so the restructuring, the organization changes again?
Just by one. With that, that position that retired, we'd be down to, for instance, if it was Renee, we'd have a Deputy and Assistant City Manager, and that would be our structure.
Okay, I mean, I'm one of...
You all directed me to keep three, I would, I would take that direction, but my, my plan would be to reduce it to two.
I, I wouldn't mind supporting having an Assistant Deputy or Assistant City Manager. I wouldn't even mind if Chief Fire Scott Young becomes that person, but I would like for him either to be the Assistant City Manager or the Chief of Police, and both of you could help make that decision. Or, no, sorry.
Made a mistake.
Fire Chief, right? Hey, now, now he's gonna take it out on me for at least a month.
More than that, more than that.
So, but I, I'd like for that decision to be made if possible, and I think Fire Chief would do a great job being Assistant if given that position, but I don't, I don't like the hybrid position. And as I look at some of these increases, I have respect for a lot of the Directors and upper management, but when I see some people getting, you know, 15% increases and I see some of the lower-level people just getting their 3% COLA, it's not just a, it's not something I want to support, and I just want to make sure that the whole point of this pay rate study was to help get these middle and lower-level people up to speed, comfortably, you know, paid for, that way we don't lose them as much. I, I have a lot of faith and respect in, in some of the upper management too, but I don't want to necessarily support that type of increases with that pay rate study. Yeah, if you compare them to other cities, but their budgets are bigger, most of them, so, and I think we can do just fine with one Assistant City Manager without the, the hybrid situation, because technically what we currently have is, we have three in a several order. If, you know, Fire Chief isn't available, then it's either Bob or Renee, so I'm not, and it feels like if, you know, if that's the organizational structure, then we gotta fill it that way, not just change it because we lose somebody, so I don't want to support that. I do think some of the upper Directors or officials are a little bit top-heavy in the compensation, like when you try to compare it to other cities, and our jobs are trying to reflect towards the middle and lower. to reflect towards the middle and lower employees to help get them up because those are the ones who get trained and then educate on how to do stuff and they leave. So, and then I'd also like to see the, the charter officials move back up in the pay band about 230 to 232. Because they're, they're people that direct us to, as board members and I think their importance should remain up there in that band. And then I'll have questions for Dr. Campbell here a little bit later, so thank you, sir.
Do you want to ask your questions of Dr. Campbell now? He can come to the podium.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Dr. Campbell, regarding the, the organizational three-way assistant deputy stuff, is that, have, have you helped propose that to other cities after your rate studies?
We have, and, and this goes to the point of, of the other commissioner on the answer, I'm sorry, I can't remember your name, but, but he raised a point about long-term people who've been here, who've put in the years of service and a lot of them have stayed when the compensation was not very competitive. They have a lot of knowledge. And one of the things we found as we were looking at the organization, many of the departments need to start looking and thinking more strategically. And we think the people that you have in place are the resources to be able to do that. So I don't see it as creating a deputy city manager and two assistants. I see as adding some additional responsibility to some senior directors so that they can employ their knowledge and expertise and how to manage people and resources to some of the other departments that could use some assistance. And so we've seen this model work in other places. As the city manager said, if one of those assistants leave, you have the option to replace them or just replace a director position. But I think at this stage in the organization, there really needs to be an aggressive push to become more progressive and more strategic in terms of your planning. And I think those three assistants, the three assistants, the deputy and the two ACMs will help make that happen. And I think it's taking advantage of, of the resources you have. If you wanted to just hire deputy and two assistants and that, they didn't have departmental responsibility, the salaries would be a lot higher. So basically they're getting, for lack of a better word, kind of a supplement to take on that additional responsibility. And I think in terms of managing the city, the city manager needs a team that he can rely on, that has various points of view and expertise that can help move the city forward. In our opinion, based on what we reviewed in terms of policies and productivity information from the city, it's needed.
Okay, and you're also aware when one of these directors or any employee takes on another additional position, there is lead pay in which that's built into their current pay structure?
Sure, but it's a little different when you talk about senior leadership positions in terms of what the compensation should look like.
As in it's, it's a lot more than what you, what you all are proposing?
It would be. And, and one of the things I wanted to say, I want to say is that when you're doing these compensation studies, the focus is on the value of the job based on the duties, responsibilities and the requirements of the job. It's not about the person and how well they perform. That's a performance issue that should be handled during their annual performance review and if you have a merit pay program, address it that way. So from our standpoint, it, it doesn't matter who holds the position because it's not about the person, it's about the value of the job. And we feel very strongly that what we have in terms of the value for these positions puts you in a competitive position. I point out, and Charles did a great job of showing you where you were in terms of entry level salaries, 13.9% below, and then at the market average, you're 9% below. If we look at that on a percentile basis, you were below the market average. The market average being the 50th percentile, you were about the 47th percentile. And so you've, you've lost people and utilities, water, wastewater, particularly operators. I think the reason you haven't seen more senior leadership people leave because they're so invested, they've been here so long, it's in their best interest to continue to ride it out until what, what time they see is appropriate for retirement. But if you want to start recruiting senior talent as well as other talent, you've got to move the bar in terms of compensation. You have too many markets that are within an easy commute of this city to where you cannot ignore the level of compensation that's being paid in these other organizations. And so what we have done is taken you from about the 47th or 48th percentile and put you around the 60th percentile, which we feel increases your position significantly with respect to your ability to recruit and retain. And I think now the focus needs to be on developing talent, middle management and those underneath them. Because in any organization you go into, it's middle management that makes or break the organization, the frontline supervisors, because they have the majority of the supervision in their organization. And so it, it's basically like a domino. You've got these ACMs and these directors who are helping develop other directors and assistants and then they're in turn are developing lead people and coordinators and frontline supervisors. And so we think this all fits together like a nice puzzle.
Okay, I mean, I'm just, from what you said, how the position are created because of the value of the position, you know, especially these hybrid, unless I heard our city manager wrong, he said, you know, these hybrid positions are really suited because of the characteristics of some of the people we have within our community. So they sort of, both those statements, I believe contradict themselves a little bit. I want to go to this page 40 of your rate study that I received and it's, it's the salary survey results for Tarpon Springs, Florida. There's this first area where it says averages for each job class. Those are the averages that were collected from all those other municipalities and-
Yes.
Okay, and then these Tarpon Springs ones where it has the range width are mid, mid-max. Those are what the proposed are for this study, correct?
If you're talking about the salary survey summary, the information for Tarpon is what's in place now. And it's compared against the market averages and you can see, easy way to look at it, anywhere on the right side where it shows a negative, either at the minimum midpoint or, or maximum, that means that you're that far behind. 13%, 12%, 10%. And, and so you'll notice that you are, for a number of jobs, you're, you're behind.
Okay, so it's, no, thank you for helping explain that to me.
And, and I would point out, the ranges were so narrow that you had a large number of employees, tenure employees, who were already at the top, some over the top, because the spread from the minimum to the maximum was too narrow.
Sure. I'm also looking at, this is the class comparison list by pay plan. This is page 58 of the document we had already received. So this basically talks about the proposed class titles versus the original titles and basically what, this was taken, just input taken and then, you know, through staff and your agency will help create the, the new titles as well as the job descriptions?
Well, everything we do in terms of that particular report, we look at everyone's job duties, responsibilities, their current title of classification. And based on the prevailing classification or title in the local government arena, if what you currently have in place in terms of title and duties, if that doesn't mesh with best practices, what we currently find in local government, we would recommend to change the title to a more appropriate title that reflected the nature of the work. There were only a few titles that needed to be adjusted.
No, thank you, sir. And there's this, it's page two of 102 in, in our report and I, really it's a title that shows report settings, implementation report. You can just maybe give it to him just so he can look at it briefly. Doctor, would you consider that the formula that was used or the input setting?
These are the report settings that I, as a consultant, use in terms of building the plan. This is information that I use in terms of how I set it up and how I structure it.
Now, is that the, the formula or the, the method to, to help?
The parameters of how we put the structure together. Understand that when, when we do these type of studies, we are collecting data on your existing positions in terms of duties and pay. We're collecting market data from peers or competitors in the region. And we're not just plugging in a number from Dunedin and saying, well, Dunedin's pretty close in size and budget, we're just gonna do that. This process relies on, on two concepts. Internal equity, which is the current duties and responsibilities, external, which is the market data. And we use linear regression, which is a computer modeling tool to enter those two sets of data. And then the software predicts what the salary range and grade should be based upon that criteria. And so this is really relevant for me as a consultant, as I enter the information into, into the software.
Okay, no, thank you, doctor. And within that same report, that 102 pages, it pretty much goes alternating where it has the general, you know, number of employees, the, the change, and then the following page has a list of the employees with the percentage change and an increase or, and all that. Is there a simpler form of a report that you could tie that in and maybe send to all of us?
The reports are generated from the system and the system is hardwired, programmed to generate the reports in a certain manager, in a certain manner. And so this is the standard where we produce all the reports.
Okay, so how, sir, how, how should we feel about some of our directors and our upper management getting, you know, 14, 15, 16% increases and some of the lower people are, are getting a 3% COLA increase, you know?
Well, and, and not to be, you know, insensitive with that, if we did not have the concept of job worth, what we pay people, we just pay everyone on one massive salary range. We would ignore what educational certifications were required for the job. We would ignore the complexity of the duties associated with some jobs. But this process allows us to address that, to make sure that jobs are valued, ranked based upon the responsibility and the complexity of the, of the duties as well as the qualifications to hold the job. It's supply and demand. Labor is no different than gasoline or orange juice. What your skill set, whatever your skill set is, an employer is willing to pay based on the availability of that labor. If, for example, we had, I'll just take a recreational leader. If, for example, we didn't have a lot of people in this region with that skill set, the pay would in essence need to go up to attract people from the outside to come in and take that job. And so jobs have value based upon those two things that I've identified. And although some of those lower level positions did not receive double-digit increase, some did, by the way, and some didn't. But it's a reflection of two things. The job value in terms of the duties and what the market is bearing for the job. And so those two things together define what we propose as the, as the salary range. And I do want to go back and address the other issue about the charter officials and the city clerk. The effectiveness of a compensation plan rests with its ability to be flexible. And so that's why we give you a salary range. You have the low end, which is someone with little or no experience, you bring them in at that, at that level and then you train them up and eventually they move through the salary range. And so if you have someone, and I'm not picking on the city clerk, but if you think that position needs some additional compensation, then that's why we have the range. Make a decision to move it forward within the range, whatever you as a body feel would be appropriate. One of the reasons why we put, we recommended putting the charter officials in there is to take politics out of where their salary should fall by being set by an objective body who looked at other organizations with, with charter official positions and say, here's the value of the job from low to high. If you want to change it within that, that, that dynamic, you certainly have the right to do that. But we wanted to make sure that numbers aren't being pulled out of the sky. They're relevant and based on some type of definable criteria, which is the duties and the market value.
And, I mean, was the training of these, you know, middle, and you even said it, the, the middle, you know, structure of these departments is very crucial, but was the human time in training these individuals, even on the lower level, taken into consideration for their development and for the-
You're, you're exactly right. But a caveat is not every job is in need of the same level of adjustment. Some of those lower level jobs were closer to being competitive than some of the higher level positions. For example, the public works position, that job was woefully inadequate for what you would, in terms of pay, for what you'd pay a public works, particularly someone with, you know, engineering background who understands infrastructure and capital improvement. It was further away, for example, than maybe a water operator. Because in some organizations, it's, it's easier to sell a pay increase for the hourly workers than it is for some of the, the management team. But the truth is, you need both. You need the management team with competent people and you need the hourly people that are competent. And so what this study found was in terms of where you stand in the market, based on all the criteria I talked about, some of the management people were further off than, than the hourly people. And that's not a reflection of their, their value to the city. It's just a, a reflection of, of the value of the position.
Okay, and as you stated, so you've helped recommend several assistant city managers in other municipalities. And I have to bring this up again because I am, I must be missing it. But if those three assistant city managers slash department directors within their departments, six months from now, they all retire. You're telling me there's only three positions that need to be filled? To me, it looks like there's six positions that need to be filled.
I, I, I disagree with that, but ultimately you all, along with the city manager, will decide how you want to fill it. You certainly would have the option to, if all three left, to replace them as a deputy and ACM. Or you could take the ACM responsible away and they would just be director level staff. But I think the part that's missing here is that you have a unique opportunity where you've been fortunate to have some people that are really good at their jobs, good at management, good at organizing and can help the new city manager in terms of how he wants to move the organization forward based on the direction he's getting from the commission. And so the costs associated with that, this is a business, 118 million dollar budget, somewhere along there.
It's a little inflated this year, but we'll get into that.
Again, no offense, but I'm a plain talker. 150, 160,000 dollars is a drop in the bucket if it's going to improve the efficiency and effectiveness of the organization.
Okay, and as, all right, I have enough questions for now. Thank you, sir.
Before I go to the vice mayor, let me go back to Commissioner Banther because you didn't have any questions. Do you have any questions of doctor?
Not specifically, but I kind of, as my colleagues say things, things, things do come to mind. And I do think, you know, I, I do think we have some departments, like I mentioned, as, as, as with the city clerk, that, and I think you touched on it, as, as we have that range and we decide where those positions start in this new plan, I'm inside that, inside that range. I think some of them just, just need to be fine, just, just, you know, fine tuned because while, you know, we are, you know, my, 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 my degrees in economics, I understand there's, there's, there is units of measurement and we have to use that in this equation and, and you've done a good job with that. But there is, there, there is a human element that we, we need to make sure we are touching on in each department to make sure things that can't necessarily be quantified per se, are being accounted for at, 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 at least the best, the, the, the best we can. So I think between now and the final approval, I'm sure with the city manager and your team, we will, you know, sort through all that. Thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
I just thank you for your input. I, I concur with pretty much everything you said. I've gone through this process before and, and I appreciate what you're doing. I understand.
Thank you. Vice mayor?
Thank you. One of the beauties of being number five on this board is I get to hear some very good questions and really I'm impressed with the response that you're giving. You kind of opened my eyes to some of the in-depth surveys that you do and why you do it. So I have some questions regarding, I think one of the issues that we have is giving three titles the same name as city manager. So I think, and I'm just saying this, there, you know, in our charter, we, I think we have a deputy slash assistant manager title. But we really, don't really need assistant city manager infrastructure and assistant city manager community development. It could just be assistant community development and assistant infrastructure. I think when we're throwing that extra two city manager titles in there, it's thrown, I, I'm just maybe speaking out loud, but it, it makes it look like we have too many, too many chiefs. So I think it's a wording thing that may be sticking, I don't know, I can't speak for the rest of the board. When I see that, it kind of threw me. I don't know if I want to have a structure with- I don't know if I want to have a structure with so many similarities like that because it's confusing to everybody.
Yeah, one of the things that you could do, and, and bear in mind, I've been an assistant city manager before, and I've done three hundred and forty-five of these studies across the country. And so there are a number of ways to split an apple. You can, you know, call it whatever you want. One option would be to keep the deputy. I think that needs to be designating the number two person under Charles's purview of responsibility. But if we wanted to distinguish those, those assistants, we could call them senior directors if, if that's a concern. And the same, their responsibility would be the same, but we would just distinguish them in another way so it doesn't look like you've got a boatload of, of, of assistants. But I, I still go back to what I said earlier. I, I think because of those individuals and their strengths, I, I think that presents a unique opportunity to really kickstart a new movement of strategic planning within the city and how it functions. We've been very impressed with, with Charles as city manager. He's, he's really a visionary. And I think with the proper tools, I, I think he can really do some great things for the city under the direction of the commissioners. And we think having that structure, whether you call it ACMs or senior directors, it doesn't matter. But the point is taking advantage of that talent.
The other thing that I, I'm having a little trouble with the three percent on the low end. You know, we went through a number of years with the five, and I also believe that we still have been feeling the pain of high prices. I know they've settled down a little bit. So, I mean, I don't know if I want to do that top end. I would like to possibly pull, if I could, a percentage. I don't know what the rest of the board is, is thinking, but I would like to pull a percentage away from that top end. I know you said you wanted to get up to about sixty percent. Maybe we could drop it down to fifty-eight, fifty-seven. I don't know what your numbers are, but at least to give that three percent into a four percent.
Here's my thought on that.
Okay.
Jim here said his background is education, economics, minds, policy, finance, and education. And so I'm a researcher. Last week, the Federal Department of Labor released its Consumer Price Index data. For the month of June, prices increased by two point seven percent. That was up from about two point four previously. They issued a word of caution, if you will, by stating that depending on how the tariffs are going to play out, that the cost of living could increase a little bit more. So everything from goods and services could go beyond that, that right now. Now, if you're concerned about the non-management staff, I would rather see you adjust their COLA a little bit higher, leave the management level at the three percent, if that's your concern, rather than punish the management folks for no reason of their own. When we did their survey of other municipalities in the region, three percent was not the highest cost of living adjustment, but it was basically the median. You know, half were higher and about half were a little bit under that. And so three percent pretty much hits that sweet spot when we know that it's already up to two point seven in real percentages for the month of June. So if you wanted maybe to look at where there's a natural break in the pay structure and, and give those non-management folks maybe three and a half or four, but leave the management folks at the three, I think that would be considered, in my estimation, a win-win for everybody.
Well, and speaking earlier to the city manager, and I could be off on my numbers, bringing it from three to four percent, I think he had said would bring it up another seventy thousand dollars. So I would still go with that. I just don't like the three percent per se. So that's, that's one thing. My other question for you is, in all these discussions, I know it was said, this does not include the union, correct?
No, sir. It does not.
Yeah, because it was said that, that there was, you know, police and fire, and I know that they're on a three-year, so that's, that's not in this, correct?
No, sir, it's not in there.
I just wanted to clarify.
When we, when we started the project, we asked about that, and the decision was that as you got closer to time to negotiate the, the contracts, you, you would then look at that and let us know if you wanted some assistance with that.
Got you. And I know that we could also, regardless of what we do up here, we have the ability for, you know, quality of work and responsibility to give increases accordingly, correct?
That's correct. You do have the ability to, you know, adjust the recommendations as you see fit. I would implore you not to reduce them if you're going to change them, maybe move them forward a little bit, but not, not reduce them because at the sixtieth percentile, that puts you at a position where I think is conservatively responsible, not overboard.
I got you.
Exactly.
I know. Did you, not did you, do you ever do an employee poll to see what actually the employees would like to see for themselves?
In terms of pay?
Yes.
No, sir.
And why not?
And I'll tell you why. After three hundred and forty-some odd of, of these things, I have never met an employee that said the increases were too much. But I've met a whole lot of employees that say it's not enough. So if we went out and canvassed your employees now, here's what I think the reaction or response would be. I would say we probably get about a third that would say, hmm, not bad. I think it was done fair. Okay, would like more, but, but I can live with this. I appreciate what was done for me by the commission, by administration. We get a second third that would say, well, if you're giving me three percent and John or Mary over here, who's in the same position, I work harder than both of them, so I should get three and a half percent because I work hard. Then you probably get the final third that would say, nah, this is just not enough, period. And so when you do these type of studies, I tell everyone, the goal is not to make everybody happy. When it comes to money, I've seen money throw rational thinking out the window when it comes to money. People become irrational, their personalities and their moods change. So the goal is not to try to make everybody happy. The goal is to treat everybody fairly. And I can honestly say we did that. I have no relatives here. This is the first time I ever set, sat foot in City Hall when we kicked off this project. I looked at the, the jobs objectively, didn't care about personalities or relationships or anything like that. Like I said, it's about the value of the job, not the value of, of the person. And so although, yes, it would be nice to try to make everybody happy, but that's an impossible, impossible task.
So you explained that, you know, your qualifications and other qualifications. So I'm not trying to make everybody happy. I'm trying to get their input to what they consider is fair. So this, let me, let me just finish this. So what, what I'm saying to you is, I understand you can't make everybody happy, but you can ask, there are people who are happy with what they're getting, as you said. There are also people who, in different ways and, you know, and, and means, have more money than somebody else. They, they don't need as much. So my, my question is just, you know, you put all this information into the computer and it spits back and gives you, why would you not at least get their input to see what they think?
Psychologically speaking, let's say, for example, that the majority, two-thirds of the employees came back and said, we think six percent, six percent is what's needed. Now that becomes an expectation. Fiscally speaking, could you afford to do the six percent? Let's say you, you probably couldn't this year. But now that's embedded in their thinking process. And then they're going to become some disgruntled, unhappy because that expectation is six percent, although you told them, we just want your opinion, your opinion, your perspective, we're not promising anything. It's wired into their thought process. And if you don't deliver that six percent, then you're going to have some morale issues. Manage, a pay is a management issue. That's why management pays, earns what it does, is to make difficult choices with the limited resources you have. And so that would be like the inmates running a prison. Somebody has to be in charge, somebody's got to make difficult decisions, and, and that's where we are.
You and I have a different way of thinking, I'll just say that.
That's what I call it, America.
I appreciate your, your aspect and your, your perspective on it. And believe me, I'm not sitting there saying?
No, I don't take it personal.
Yeah. I'm not sitting there saying that, you know, I'm going to let them have that perspective they're getting six percent. But I love to have people tell me what they want and why they want it because I don't sit over the police chief and see what he's doing twenty-four seven. But if I get a, written something from him, he could then dictate to me what he does on a day-to-day basis. And that goes for everybody else in here. We can't sit over everybody to no. So if some people, you know, you just, you'll just get a perspective, is that's all I'm saying.
And, and I do value input from across the organization. I think what, what would be much more productive and healthier because now there's a big push in both the public and the private sector to focus on quality of work life, making sure people aren't overtaxed, burned out, making sure they, they've got an environment where they appreciate and enjoy coming to work. I think every organization should, every two or three years, they should do a quality of work life survey. Ask the employees how they feel about their work schedule, their health benefits, the leadership they get from their immediate supervisor, from their department head. What other things would they like to see the city implement in terms of programs or policies? That, in my opinion, would be a much more healthier exercise.
Okay. I just have one more thing and I think, I, I want to thank you. That was excellent. Like I said, I've had most of my questions asked or answered by you, and I was impressed with how you, you know, you put in the documents and get out the, the feedback. We had in, I don't think you're going to be able to answer this, maybe you will, the pay plan implement, implementation costs, easy for me to say. We had too many employees, so this was, because we had on the two hundred and ninety-nine employees, we had then on the one hundred and ten employees and we had a hundred and sixty-seven employees. All three of those were different categories, correct? Because we don't have that many employees if we add them all up. So there has to be some redundancy in there, no?
Well, there are vacant positions in there for sure.
Not that many.
Not that many.
No.
Everything that is in the report was double-checked on the data file that we received from, from, from HR. So all the people are in there, part-time as well, part-time and full-time and vacancies.
So none of these are duplicate?
No, sir. The department heads went over their section, which identified all their people.
We do have a, a lot of part-time folks that we keep on the books. They're just here for the summer, but we, we keep them on the books. So if they want to come back the next summer, is my understanding. So that may have been what inflated the number.
It's almost six hundred employees.
No.
No.
I'm not sure where you're, where you're seeing that.
You have, it's page three. Hundred and two ninety-nine, one ten, one sixty-seven.
I don't think that's in here. Oh, this is the summary that we typed up. Oh, it's, this is the, so this is the total that got the three percent. Of that total, one hundred and ten also got an adjustment.
That's a breakdown of the two.
And a hundred and sixty-seven of them got a compromise. So it's, it was a total and then the other two are, how many also got?
So somebody could be, somebody could be involved.
That's what I've asked.
That's why, it's why it's going to add up to more than the employees we have.
That's what I was trying to get to, yes. Okay. Okay.
Mayor, I just have one quick comment.
Yes, sir.
I, I really do like the idea he said about, and this might cure some, some of the heartburn up here, about calling the assistant CMs the senior directors. I realize it's just words, the duties and pay are the same, but, you know, words matter, especially in the public space, and that was some of my confusion with, with the org chart. So I'm not saying you must do that, but I think you should, you should, you should look into that. And then I think that might, it also de-politicizes that position. Because if you put city manager in, that's called work at will. You know what I mean? And I understand we have, we need to have a deputy named function, we do. And that's appropriate in Chief Young. But I think re-titling the, the two ACMs as senior directors are going to call, are going to help cure a lot of things and could help the public see more. Because it's kind of like our vice mayor position. Our vice mayor is a commissioner, but they assume vice mayor titles. If Eisner, you know, doesn't show up one day, we don't hire a commissioner and a vice mayor. It's, it's one position. We understand that, you know, but the outside doesn't. So I really think that, that was a great idea and we should, we should look into that and consider it.
Yeah, I too think that the senior director idea would, would keep it from being as confusing. My degree, my degree's in finance, so you got that, the economist and you got the?
I'm not economist.
But the, but, you know, I, I agree wholeheartedly with you. This has to be objective. And the reason that we hire somebody, we, we don't do this in-house so that we don't have it be personality-driven. You know, I, I, again, with my degree in finance, I look at, and there may be just some disagreements up here, but I, I look at Charles as being the CEO of the city. I look at us being the board of directors of, of the, of that hundred and ten or the hundred million dollar corporation. And, you know, our responsibilities are to the, if, if it was a corporation, the shareholders, in this case, the residents. We're not here to make employees happy, that's not our job. Our job is to pay, is to, is to deliver services to the community. That's it. Deliver our services to the community. Paying people the proper compensation to retain those people who can provide those services and also to attract those who can provide services. So if you are independently recommending a certain thing, I, I've got to give a lot of weight to it. Doesn't mean that we here collectively can't tweak some things here, and we probably should. But I really appreciate your objectivity. I think that's what's important, that's why we hired you, and to take some of that out of the, out of the, out of the mix. But again, we'll have the latitude and they're also, just for everyone's, we have that three percent merit discretion, right? So that in, department heads can reward those who they believe deserve an increase due to their performance. So we have those things, even though they're getting the three, there is an additional possibility of additional merit, which again can go up to three. So I, I, and I'd like to leave as much latitude to those people that, that actually work with those people every day and, and could determine who is, you know, merit or deserving. Again, to retain them. You know, we're not, again, the, we're not the shop stewards, we're not the union reps here. We're, we, you know, we, we have to provide services for the residents. And again, I appreciate what you have all your, I saw, Commissioner, did you have an addition? I saw your hand.
Yes.
I just want to say one more thing and then I'll, I'll yield to you. I appreciate your, again, your objectivity and you, you answer things extremely well.
Thank you, sir.
Are you, are you, you're not a lawyer too?
No, sir.
All right, you make a good one. Commissioner Kulaas?
Yes, Doctor, this original report that we had, that we, this process, there was an original report, may I correct, that you supplied? And then what, what latitudes did our staff have in, in looking at it and making any adjustments?
Well, it, it underwent two rounds of review. When the initial report was produced, it was a draft report. The project manager at the time was Paul. So I submitted a report to Paul and to the city manager. They reviewed, they had some questions, some concerns, some feedback. I went back and re- I went back and responded to their concerns and feedback. Then the city manager directed Paul, correct, to meet with each individual employee, department head, to show them how their department came out, including their position and all the people in their department. That generated a lot of feedback and some adjustments there.
Sir, can I ask you, when you say, when Paul went to these department heads and you said it generated feedback and a lot of adjustments, is it at that current time, the department heads made some suggestive adjustments for you to review?
Yes.
So simple terms. So you, we were able, there's a report that shows the original and plus what the differences and what the department heads made?
Yes. The department heads, I received their suggestions, recommendations with explanations why. And then I made the adjustments that I thought were proven, which they came back with some really good points that I wouldn't be able to tell from the questionnaires that was submitted by the employees. They pointed out some stuff that was impactful to the analysis. And I made the adjustments that were appropriate based on that feedback from the department heads. Because the worst thing you could do when you do these type of studies is, is force the results on to the department heads because they gotta be able to sell it to their people. And so I was appreciative for their honest feedback. And we told them in the beginning, you're gonna see what the results are and give you a chance to opine on what the results are. And if you submit recommendations that we can validate, then, then we'll adjust it. I'm just not gonna change something because you want me to. You gotta give me some justification to do that. And they did. And at the end of the day, we all were satisfied with the, with the end result.
And some of those changes could be, tech one is getting too much of an increase, should be at 3%?
No, no, no.
What kind of changes is it?
Water operator should be a grade 108 instead of a 107.
Okay.
Or why did this particular job come out at a 120? I explained how my thinking as we analyzed that job. Some department head would come in and say, well, I think there was a little bit of an overemphasis on the information you were given from the employee. Here's actually how that handles or works within their day-to-day responsibility. So I brought it from a 120 to a 119. It was moving a grade, you know, one way or another, up or down. That was the changes that were made based on feedback from the department.
Is that something you could share with us?
No offense, but I'm gonna be candid because I have done this for a long time. And I would hope that you'd appreciate my professionalism and knowledge. I don't think it's appropriate to get down into the weeds of who, where and what in terms of how some of the people in positions were graded. We, the idea was to give everybody an opportunity from the employee workforce, the department heads and the city managers to opine on the results of the study, provide feedback where there was differences of opinion and perspective, then to address that. I think at this level, it should be about policy, not trying to micromanage the comp study. That's just my opinion with all due respect.
Absolutely, sir, but I am, as my job, it is to ask questions and investigate matters. And this pay study hasn't been done in such a very long time.
Okay.
And when we get stuff that comes back and would you not agree that the majority of the cities that you've compared us to budget-wise, personnel-wise, are much bigger in budget as well as employees, majority of them?
Some are smaller in budget, some are smaller in terms of size of the workforce because we take the average of the market data. We don't cherry pick the highest or the lowest, we take the average. And we're not collecting the average based on what individual employees are making. We're taking the average based on what the value of the job is from the organization's pay structure. You cannot build a statistically valid compensation study by using actual salaries of employees in Dunedin or Pinellas County because their actual salaries are a reflection of how long they've been there, what their education level was and experience beyond the minimum when they started, what policies that organization may have to move individual salaries. So what we're doing is trying to find the value, as I said, of the job. So we're looking at what do they value this position at in terms of their pay schedule? And we extrapolate that data and that goes into the model, not actual salaries of comparable employees.
Okay, and I mean, the, what was presented to us originally, as, as I requested from the city manager, was this general one sheet with, like we said, number of employees, total difference in the department and whatever.
Department summary pages.
The department summary pages. And then what I requested more, got a little bit more detailed in individuals and their percentage changes. So you understand why sometimes individuals have to get into the weeds a little bit to look at certain things. So it's no disrespect to you, your profession, but this is, this hasn't been done in a very long time. And I hope some board members did look at this stuff and not just, you know, gone through the process before. So I would like to see those notes because it takes into consideration.
This is not my first rodeo. This is my first rodeo. We've, I've had this issue years ago. Our legal department deems our work papers our property and I will not supply the work papers. I've given you the summary of the data that we forgot, we got from the other peers. I've, I've shown you what we're recommending for each individual employee. But what is the value of me giving you my work papers so you can second guess me, the paid consultant, who you hired to bring in? Because the pay study that was done last time was internally done and it was a mess.
And that, and that's why we've gone in a direction where we hire different people. But how do you think I feel about the transparency now that you're saying that you don't want to deliver the notes to everything?
No, I'm not gonna give you my working papers.
But aren't they public documents, the things that we work for for all this?
You can consult with any attorney you want, they're not. My work papers are my work papers. I've given you the product of the work papers and the work and the analysis. If you think a job should, if you think an individual in there salary should be changed, then that's something you guys need to be signed. But from my perspective, I've given you everything you need to make whatever decisions you want to make.
I don't think you have, sir, so that's all I'm gonna say for now, thank you.
All right, we agree to disagree.
Okay, is there any other? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
So I just got a little confused with the. I just got a little confused with the last conversation a little bit. I kind of asked if we do an employee poll and you said no. But you did inquire with the department heads.
Yeah, we, Charles even said that.
But they're employees.
In the beginning, yes. But I meant the rank and file employees.
Okay, I, I just wish you were clarified that you didn't do that with everybody. I thought you did it with nobody.
No, no.
Okay, that was, that was it, thank you.
I'll just make one more comment. I, I can appreciate your work paper comment. I'm a certified public accountant. When I produce a financial statement for a client, that is my product. I do not turn over my work papers to anyone unless, you know, the board of accountancy asks them for me, of them. My product is, is the, is the end result and your product is your report. And that's what we paid for.
And then I'll point out one more thing that speaks to the quality of what we do. We're the only company in this business and there's a lot of them. Some of them work out of their garage or whatever. But we are the only company that has someone who is certified by the Fourth Circuit Federal Courts out of Virginia as an expert on compensation and pay equity. Her name is Carolyn Long. And so she reviews every report before it goes out the door.
I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, Doctor, thank you very much. I appreciate your, your detailed answers to the questions and thank you, City Manager. So let's go to item number three, the proposed budget for fiscal year 2026 and overview of our finance director, Mr. Ron Herring.
Be careful, we're warmed up already.
Pull like a tired fighter, maybe it'll be easier.
No comment. Okay, what we have, what I first got is I, you know, I spared you, you know, usually I have like 30 or 40 slides, but you know, I've spared you just like a 10, 12 slides tonight. So but what I wanted to do was mostly we're gonna go to the general fund, but I just want to have a couple of slides on the overall budget as it's sitting right now, the draft 2026 budget. All funds are in balance, the general fund was balanced with no use of unassigned fund balance, 10 straight year. City management with department heads, budget advisory committee reviewed the budget with the department heads. And then we had the budget public hearing on June 17th, which included the survey results and citizens' requests that they'd like to see in the budget. Items still in process so far, the compensation study, stormwater revenue sufficiency study is still in progress along with the water and sewer revenue sufficiency study and capital projects. Capital project, we weren't gonna get into detail tonight, but mostly in two weeks when we have the budget workshop on July 29th. This is, I, I was like the, the largest funds of the city. Right now, the draft budget of, of the city is 119 million. That's $33 million more, 33 million more than last year's adopted budget of 86 million. The general fund is up 3.99% in the sort of bronzy color there showing the increase per fund. The general fund's up 3.99%, mostly due to pay and benefit increases. A lot of the other bigger increases are due to capital projects. So water and sewer fund, 40.4% increase due to capital project increases that we're funding. Sanitation fund, not too many capital projects, but it's mostly the 3% maximum for the contract increase for waste management. Penny fund, we've got a 205% increase, again, with the capital projects that are proposed. CRA fund, 242% capital project, Orange Street and CRA Master Plan. Stormwater fund, 161% increase, again, capital projects. And the golf course fund, 203%, the new clubhouse, which is in the, in design, 4.2 million. So I know it's big, but a lot of the increase is due to capital projects that are in the budget. And as this one, total city expenditures, again, trying to break it down by personnel services. Last year, this year, the increase in personnel is 1.9 million, 5.2%. Operating expenses of 29 million, up 964,000. And I just want to give a kudos to the departments. When we started working on the budget back in April, May, a lot of departments, we came in and we reduced a lot of the operating, about $800,000 across all city funds. Well, I think alone it was like 7, 800,000 just in the general fund. So a lot of credit to the departments for helping to cut some of the budget there. Debt service up 2.8 million because of the financing we're looking into. Grants and aids and transfers and reserves and other. Total budget, as I say, 119 million, the draft budget as it currently sits. And then down below, you can see the capital outlay is 30.3% of the budget. I'm sorry, I missed up above is, there's $36 million worth of capital projects currently in the budget. We usually average around 10 million. So you can see we've got roughly, you know, 26 million dollars more in capital projects in this budget. If you took off the 26 million, you'd be back down to a budget of right around 93 million. This is the revenue side of the, of the total city budget, going down from taxes. Advallariums increase of 619,000, that's the 4.07% property taxable value increase we, we had, we got. A lot of, one of the other larger items is intergovernmental, went up, as highlighted there in yellow, 5.2 million. That's mostly due to water and sewer electric grant of 2 million. And the Craig Park seawall phase two, phase one construction, 2 million. Charges for services up 1.9 million. And that's mostly what you find in that category is a lot of the enterprise funds, water, water, sewer, stormwater and sanitation rate increases. Down in miscellaneous, we have a $3 million increase and that's mostly due to the water and sewer PFOS settlement. And then highlighted down below is the 18, 18.2 million. And that is the plan, what we have so far planned and in the budget, some financing of the 18.2 million dollar increase for financing. And that's, that's all I had on, just going the overall. I don't know if you have any questions on that or if I just go back and go into the general fund. Like I say, we're gonna have another meeting in a couple of weeks. We'll go over the enterprise funds and the capital projects.
Why don't we, why don't you go give your presentation on the general fund and then we can go through questions on both?
Okay. Some highlights of the general fund, as I mentioned, while we maintaining the same millage rate of 5.37, the property taxable value increase of 4.07. We were worried at first earlier in the year if we were gonna have just a 0% increase, but fortunately we at least got a 4.07% increase. Last year we had a, it was 9.1% increase. We fully funded the police and fire union contracts, which is the third and final year. Funded the police and fire pensions as required amount per the actuary. And we have funded the general employees' compensation study that we've been talking about. We always like to show every year, the Tarpon Springs is a full-service city with, and we, up here, we got the full-service cities with populations over 20,000. And as you can see on the far right, the millage rate of Tarpon is 5.37. The lowest of the, of the five, of the largest cities over 20,000 full service. Largo's at 5.52, Pinellas Park 5.65, Clearwater 5.88 and St. Pete at 6.45. Items in the, new items in the budget, we've got some new positions in there. Funded for starting October 1st, 25 as a part-time code enforcement supervisor and full-time building department technician. We have one funded part-time right now, but then we, we'll fund it for full-time now. And then to try to can squeeze some positions in the budget and be able to fit them in funding-wise, we've got some positions starting on April 1st, 2026. So we're funding for half the year, a police, police dispatcher, a part-time HR administrative assistant and an IT specialist. Some other idea, additions to the budget, we've got funding for additional marketing. I think there's at least 60,000 that pinpointed for marketing. There is some other items in there across some departments. Funding for the economic development sponge docks, that's $100,000 in the budget. Funding for additional training, that goes across a lot of departments with their own training, but within, we do have some departmental developmental training of about 50,000 within the budget. Getting into some numbers for the general fund. Last year, this year, personnel services up 1.6 million. As you can see, that is the increase of the general fund. Operating, this is where, like I say, we're down 146,000, but departments really helped out and cut about 6, 7, 800,000 out of their operating costs. Capital is only at 238,000. We never usually have too much capital in the general fund because we usually don't have the money for it because as down below, you can see personnel services is 73% of the general fund budget. And just wanted to point out that the increase in the budget over last year is 3.99%. On the other, on the other side for the general fund is the revenues going from last year to this year. The main increases is the advallarium of 596,000 and then charges for services, 570,000. That is mostly due to, the fire department last year got a new unit that was funded. Last year I was a little conservative on the budgeting, so it's helped out in providing at least about $480,000 more for the, for the budget for 2026 under the charges for services. A lot of numbers, a little bars here and stuff, but the main thing is trying to show the general fund budget increase and percent increase over the last five years. That's why I thought was interesting that we were just at a 3.99% increase this year compared to we were 8.39% last year. Two years ago, 7.03%. And in 2023, we're at 10.65% increase and then in 2022, we're at 4.84% increase. So we're the lowest percentage increase in the general fund for the last five years for 2026. This is more inform, I know you might, might want to, we got the department heads here going over their budget, but this is sort of, I try to, with budget advisory, did this too to try and say, what's the major increases or decreases in the departments here? I won't go through most of, all of them, but you know, most of them is a compensate and study increase. There's some like the city manager department, which has the economic development sponge docks, 100,000. And that's why the city. SpongeDocks, 100,000. And that's why the city manager department went up 176,000. Information technology went down 145,000, and that's because the IT tech department is being moved to the cultural department. Under the planning department, they are now, the code enforcement department is going to be under planning, is being moved from police. And getting into police and fire, the big dollar amount increases in the, in the budget, the 1.4 million dollar budget increases is the police and fire. That's highlighted there with their union increase and their required pension contributions. Building department went down because in the previous year, they had a large grant in the Tree Bank for about 165,000. Public services went down 103,000, mostly due to they had a community center grant in the previous year of 120,000. Cultural and civic services, as you can see right below it, there's going to be a separate library department, so we've broken out library and its own department. So cultural, we took out the 1.8 million, but then there was also an increase in the cultural department by moving the IT tech department, we had a budget of about 250,000, over to the cultural department. And other than that, there's not much too more exciting going down the line there. So I think that's, I just have the budget scheduled for the next, you know, with tonight's meeting on July 22nd, we'll establish the maximum millage rate per state statutes, the second budget workshop on July 29th. And if we need a third budget workshop on August 7th, and then the public hearings will be on September 3rd and 17th. And that's what I got for you.
Thank you, Ron. So the only, I know we're going to have plenty of time to get into much more detail as we go through this process, but I know your, your mission was to be able to create this budget with no millage rate increase. So, and I know you've done that, correct?
Correct.
Which I commend you for, because it's a lot of work to, to put all these numbers together and, and not have an increase to the, to the, to the residents. So I want to thank you for that. Thank you for your work, and I know, again, we're going to get way more into the, into the details in, in the coming month or so. So, thank you very much. Commissioner Banther?
Yes, thank you, Ron. This is, I don't know what budget season this is with me and you, but you've always done a very good job at explaining these, these, all these numbers in a, in a very simple way. So I, I do, I do appreciate that. Thank you. I think it's very impressive, like the mayor just said, that we have a 38% increase in the budget, but no increase in the tax base, or rather the millage rate. And I think that, you know, goes, goes along the lines of the good stewardship that, that we've had. And I think it's going to be our job as the commission to help, you know, message that, that appropriately when people hear about the increase in the budget, explain why it is. Most of it comes from enterprise funds and for specific capital improvement programs, how we kept the millage rate the same, which I think, you know, I don't think you could strike a better balance than, than you have in this budget as far as what, meeting our goals and our needs and, and not increasing our taxes. So I don't have any specific questions at this time. I'll see, I'll see what my colleagues have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner DiGnato?
As always, you've done a great job, Ron. I appreciate it. Holding the rate is, was important to all of us, I think, right now during this time. And we're able to do that. I'm excited about some of the things that we're going to look at doing here in the future and escalating some of our projects and still being able to maintain the millage rate that we're, we're doing. So I appreciate your endeavors and know that you look forward to doing budgets every year.
Commissioner Kulaas?
He's kind of, it's between Ryan and I.
All right, Commissioner Kulaas?
Thank you, Mayor. Ron, we just, we talked about how the general fund's gone up about 4%, but our overall budget, as we talked about, is up in a difference of...
The total city? 38%?
So we got a $33 million increase. Now, obviously, that, a portion of that money comes from the interdepartment loans and plus this expected loan, which I feel like we're all just, we're all in on this loan already, because this is what we're given, assuming we're going to take on a loan. And we have no option or no view of what our finances are going to look without a loan of $20 million. And so I have some issues with it all. We're borrowing a lot of money. We can sit there and say, good debt, bad debt, what we want, but we still don't have a plan on what we're doing, on what projects we're going to do, the priority of them, and then the project on the backend. I don't have a commitment from some senior leadership. They're going to be around for 10 years while they take on these loans for the community. And, you know, how are all these projects going to get done in one year, you know, per year, depending on we're going to do it all? So it looks like we have no backup plan. This board is all into borrowing money, and I still think the residents need to decide on it. They need to vote. And if that has to come in a March election, that's still within the, the budget cycle. It needs to happen, because like I said, we, we gave them that referendum. Do they want to be able to let the city manager make decisions up the properties up to $500,000 from the current 350? I said, nope, keep it at 350, and we want to vote on it. So you don't think they want to vote on $20 million loan? So I do have some issues. We're expecting to get some loan that, I don't think is the greatest thing. We've seen projects balloon up, and we could say, oh, the projects are going to cost more in the future, but there's going to be a lot more projects too in the next 10 years too. Those are going to have ballooned up values as well. And so I am concerned, but well, the general fund looks fine for now, but obviously, there's some, just because the general fund is, looks okay, doesn't mean the overall budget isn't a concern. And so those are my questions for now. Ron's done a great job, staff's done a great job, but you know, this is, we're giving free passes during this budget cycle. It's the city manager's first budget. Like I said, he needs to work with the budget that we've been given, that we need to work with, and then have an opportunity to make those type of latitude arrangements. I don't, I don't think any city manager should get a, a loan like that to help do, do capital improvement projects, especially in the first year. I want to see something proven to us. So those are my thoughts on all of it. And I like the board to support, including the residents making and voting on whether they want to borrow that money at the amount suggested and for the year suggested. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So again, I'm a little confused. Thank you, first of all, Ron, as always. Did we agree to $20 million loan, or we were looking at a $10 million loan?
Well, so far, when we went over, we're looking at 19.3 million financing, a 10-year bank note.
So it was the fact that it was a 10-year loan, that you don't have to go to a referendum, but I didn't know that we were going to do $20 million.
Would you explain what are in that 20 million? What are the things that you are in, financing in that 22?
Well, the 19.3 million was, was the Station 70, $6 million, 1.6 million for Spring Craig Park Seawall Phase One Construction, 4.2 million for the Golf Course Clubhouse, 3.5 million for the stormwater projects, and 4 million for Beckett Bridge Utilities, was a total of the 19.3 million.
Gotcha. Okay. But some of that's already funded?
Yes, we have cash funded the Fire Station 70 and the 1.6 million of the Craig Park Seawall Phase One Construction.
So what are we doing with that?
What we're trying to do is free up some money. So instead of having $200,000 left in the penny fund, we'll have about 5 million left. So we'll have money available for other projects like the bayou dredging. Also be able to save, so if we do this, we will not have to lease fire trucks in the future. We're able to reserve aside $400,000 a year, like the fire ladder truck that's kind of come before the board, maybe in a couple of weeks. So instead of having to lease that or finance it, we can reserve aside $400,000 a year for four years. So we have the 1.6 million ready by 2029 for this fire truck.
So what is the difference between financing the fire trucks when they come in or financing this now?
I mean, you can go ahead and finance the fire trucks when, when four years, when that comes up.
I mean, it's the same thing, though. I'm not seeing the benefit to the...
Well, I think the main thing is you'd have, you free up the 5 million for the bayou dredging and other projects. You have other projects out there too with Craig Park Seawall Phase Two Construction. So it's freeing up money to have for these other projects that are sort of hovering out there. I think there's also the SpongeDocks flood abatement project that's still in the works too.
Yeah, there's a few extra million in that one too, I know. And just, I'll let you know, I did get a call today regarding the, and I said to the city manager, flooding on Alt 19 on every high tide. So, you know, that's, that's another headache that we have to deal with, because I don't see that Pinellas County is going to deal with it. But, okay. The intergovernmental, I'm a little confused on this one, because it has electric grant, 2 million Craig Park. So isn't that redundant to what we're discussing on the loan?
Well, those are separate. The electric grant, Water and Sewer has a $5 million electrical project to upgrade the wastewater treatment plant electrical. They've got a $2 million grant coming for that.
And what's then the Craig Park, 2 million?
That's the Craig Park. The project for Craig Park Seawall Phase One Construction totals 3.6 million. The grant is 2 million. The other part is the 1.6 million we were just talking about. We have cash funded currently.
Gotcha. So it's broken down into two parts. Okay. Our good old PFOS, what are we planning on doing with that? Money that was given to us or awarded to us?
The PFOS?
Yes.
That is going towards water wells. They need a new water well, so those are going towards those.
Because it says Water Sewer Fund.
That's the title of the fund, but yes, it's going towards water wells.
When you say water wells, what do you mean?
They're going to, they need so many more water wells to supply the water plant.
The RO plant?
Yes, RO plant.
Okay. I just wish that it said that, that's all.
I only say, so many characters there, you know.
Okay, I had this on loan proceeds. Okay, I asked that already. That's, that's pretty much it. I know, I know Commissioner doesn't want to, you know, borrow money, but, you know, we are on a low amount of money. As long as we use this for capital improvements in a positive manner, I don't want to get into too many projects that will be sitting on Bob Roberts' lap, as I'm seeing him shake his head, because there's only so many things you can keep tabs on. And all I can see in Florida is things get, you can't, you can't keep a tab on everything. And a project, I don't want the project to go like what Rose Avenue did. You know, that was bad. And then we had still the situation going on with Seabreeze. That was another project that went out of control. And I don't put that fault on you. It's just, there's only, there's just so many people could be there unless you have somebody watching everything that's going on. So when you're loaning money for all these different projects, you have to have the people to be constantly overseeing it. It's not just the money thing. So I really would like to see what we're going to need to loan or, or borrow rather, rather than just have a figure and then sit and scratch our head what we could utilize it for. I remember when I first got on this board, there was discussion of, they bought certain things and then decided where they went. I don't believe in that school of thinking. I believe that we should be seeing what we need, and then we buy it for where we need to put it, not, you know, vice versa. So I, I don't want to just give a carte blanche to an $18 million loan, just so that we can have some extra cash. I'd rather borrow it as we need it. So that's, it wasn't a question, it was a comment. But I think I'm allowed to do a comment.
Yeah, let's, you can, you can do whatever you want. Let's go one more time around the bend, because I want, I have a couple of things I want to say. You know, I, I think all these, this terminology is misleading. When you say, the fire station is funded...
I said that.
No.
I said that.
Well, he said it too.
You agreed with me.
Right. So when you confirm, how about that? When you confirm that the fire station is funded, what you're saying is, we have money there that we could use to pay for the fire station, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So it's not, that money can be used for anything. We're just choosing to take $6 million and buy a fire station upfront, right?
Correct.
Okay, which an option would be to fund the fire station over a 10-year period, just like we would do, and we have done with the Stamis property, right?
Correct.
Okay. That we didn't want to take $5 million out of our funds that could be used for roads and streets and all that, and we decided to go ahead and string it out for 10 years because it made sense. It was a capital investment. The fire station will have value for many years to come, but we're asking, if we pay for it now with what you say is funded, which just means there's money there, that's money that can't be used for other things, such as, and, and I, I take difference with you when you are saying, oh, we're going to do bayou dredging or we're going to do this. We're going to obviously decide in our CIP meetings what we are going to use our available funds for, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't think you, again, that's misleading when you just, you know, name off some random things. Because what matters to me is, one is that we're not spending $6 million right now on a fire station, again, that has value over a long period of time. And 10 years is, I'd be happy if we could go 20 or 30, but we, we don't have that authority. We do have authority under this board to go 10. So if we go 10, that frees up, just on the fire station alone, it frees up over $5 million in money that can be used for, in my opinion, stormwater mitigation that's, that is, that is achievable. Streets, we have so many, you know, brick streets throughout town that we need to restore and get them up to snuff. We have sidewalks. We have a lot of infrastructure that we need to, to deal with. You know, we were, I, I was having a conversation today about, you know, when we talked about the SpongeDocks area, you know, the importance of having Roosevelt be a decent street to drive down. Right now, it's not. It's a messed up street that probably, you know, causes more alignment issues for cars than probably anywhere else. We've got Orange Street, we've got Safford Avenue, those, those brick streets. We've got a lot of things we need to, to address. So this is not, we're not, again, borrowing money, again, on anything that doesn't have value going forward. And I think when we get to, and you showed every commissioner how that whole thing works, our debt service to general revenue is going to be less than, more than half of the communities in our general area. Less than half of what Dunedin spends, what, less than half of what Newport Ritchie has in their debt. This is going to be reasonable debt, that is going to be where, 4%, 5%, somewhere in that, in that general range.
Yeah.
Of, of not the whole, not the whole budget, but only of the general revenue, which is what, 47, 50, how old is it, 47?
47 million.
47 million dollars. So we're talking about, of the whole revenue of the entire city, we're talking about less than, what, a point, and somewhere around a point, 1.75%. Again, it's real small debt. It's debt that is very comfortable for the, for any municipality to function with. It's low. And again, we're buying fixed assets that have long-term useful value, instead of paying for them now, and at, at, because everything comes at a cost. You pay for the, if we pay for the fire station now, that's a whole lot of streets we can't do. That's a whole lot of sidewalks we can't do. Okay. So, and, and under your budget, without the financing, you had only $200,000 left in the penny you had only $200,000 left in the penny fund, correct?
Correct.
Okay, $200,000 is, goes like that. $200,000 could be one overage in some project. $200,000 out of a $100 million budget, that's tight. And that's with doing none of these things. That's not fixing a street in town above, very minimal stuff. So, you know, I, I don't want the citizens to, to get the impression that we are either mortgaging the future of our town. We're not by any means, nor are we, or is this a irresponsible move. And it's not the city manager's move. He's not the one doing it. It's, I, I came up with, I was the first guy to come up with this idea, okay? You know, when, when the city, when our vice mayor talked about all of our, our strengths as individuals, you know, and I give you deference to your strength in mechanics and understanding construction and all those things. This is my deal, okay? And I would never, ever put the city in jeopardy. I'm, I'm a reasonable person, I'm a conservative person. I'm telling you, this makes sound sense. It's, it makes, it, we're putting the city in more jeopardy if we don't do this. Because we're gonna have, we're gonna be so thin. And God forbid, we have another hurricane like we did. We're, we have, our reserves are, are, so we, so we're gonna tell the residents, hey, we can't do any of these improvements, but we got you a fire station. Okay, come on. And, and, and the, in that money that you're borrowing, also is the clubhouse. That clubhouse is paying for that debt service. So that, that debt service isn't coming off our general revenue. That's coming off of operations from the, from the golf course. So I'm, I, I, this, you know, Commissioner Banther talks about hills worth dying on. This one I'm, I'm, I'm worth dying on. So, because I know it's the right thing. Let's go, Commissioner Banther, you want to say something?
Can I throw in one more thing here, just briefly? You know, by having the money available, you're able to do some of these projects and not have the cost. If you have to do these projects later, they're gonna, with inflation, they're gonna cost more. So you've got the money available, do these projects at today's cost.
How many years you been here? I know you hate it when I ask you that question.
You want me to do this again?
I know, I asked you that question, 38 years.
Yeah, right.
Okay. You are, you are a consummate professional. You have been through, you know, you started when Tom Koulianis was the mayor of Tarpon Springs and there's been, what, 12 mayors since then?
I'm gonna finish with you.
Hold on, and you're gonna finish with me? But you are as responsible as they come. I know you're as responsible. Do you, do you think this is a sound approach?
Yeah, it is. And we also, we're one of the, we're still one of the lower, as we look at the annual debt service to revenues in, in, in the area here, so yes.
And what I, what I'm gonna ask is that Commissioner Koulias, you know I respect you. And, you know, unless I'm wrong, the count is, it's gonna happen, right? So what I want all of you to do is, is obviously participate in what we use that money for. You know, if it's gonna happen, that we're gonna borrow money, we're gonna have this freed-up money, what, what I'm gonna ask is that, you know, and which I know you will, you know, and it's gonna be an opportunity for you to, to, to express what items you believe are important to work on in the community, just like all the rest of the commissioners. So I'm not insensitive to, you know, your position. And I don't, and I don't impugn you even in the least. I think you legitimately have your feelings and, and, you know, and I, and I respect them. But if, 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 if it's gonna happen, then let's make sure that we use the freed-up money for the best possible things that add, that help our community. And, and I know you will do that. So Commissioner Banther, you wanna have one more round?
Yeah, just quickly. So I couldn't agree more with, with everything, literally everything that, that the mayor just said. You know, it does boil down to just opportunity costs as well, meaning the value of the next best thing. So if we don't take out debt service, which I think would be irresponsible, you know, you know, fiscally speaking, we can't do other things for operating on a cash basis. I don't know of any, you know, $100 million corporation, or government entity for that matter, that operates like that. So I think it's a very responsible tool. And I'm glad that the mayor just said what he said about Commissioner Koulias, that, you know, obviously it's, you know, this is not a light matter. You know, I, I think it's good that there's somebody up here that's saying, hey, is this the right thing to do? Let's learn more about this debt service. But, but I think, I think more importantly, you know, I would look for, for you in your watchdog mode to, to be part of that conversation when it comes to what, what we use this, this debt for. Because I think that's what we have to be laser focused on. And that, I think, is a primary function and role. I've often, you know, I get up here and I say that, that, you know, piss people off sometimes because I think we're doing things that are outside of our purview, but that is absolutely inside our purview. We should absolutely be, 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 be the ones up here deciding what we use this debt service for to bet, to better, to better, like, you know, all, all the residents. And, you know, it's, it's, it's very cliche, but if we don't do these improvements that we have to get lending for, and a lot of this is for stormwater and things like, like that, when, 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 when residents are, are in knee-deep water, then I, I really don't think they're gonna be terribly concerned about the responsible debt that we took out to help, to help solve these problems. So again, of course, I respect any opinion on this board. I'm glad we have differences so we can explore things better, and that's where you learn. And, you know, I look forward to you being a watchdog in that mode, thank you.
Commissioner DiDonato?
Well, I, I, I thank you, sir, for trying, you know, to further explain. And I concur. Most people take out a loan to buy a new car. Basically, we're, and, and at a bully run, the next time we meet, we'll be talking about where these projects actually are. We will name them, and we will name the funding source further to, so that everyone has a better understanding. Is that not correct?
Talk about the, the actual projects?
Yes, yes.
Well, the ones we mentioned before, the $19.3 million worth of projects, yes.
Yes, okay. But because there seems to be a misunderstanding of that we're just borrowing money and we don't have any reason to do so. And I, I would assure everyone that we indeed are borrowing it to do projects that have been on the board that are now gonna for sure get done. And we may even be able to add some projects to this because we're taking the loan. So we're, we're magnifying what we would have done had we done it the other way, is what this project is really doing. We're magnifying our ability to get things done. So I, I thank you for making that point.
Can I, can I correct one thing you said?
What's that?
We're not borrowing money to fix streets or do any of these projects. We're borrowing money to build a fire station.
To free up, yes, for project, yeah, that's what I meant.
But we're built, we're borrowing money to build a fire station.
Yes.
That, again, the money that, that we're not gonna use to buy the fire station is the money we're using to do these things. So, so I don't want the community to think we're borrowing money to fix streets. We're not. We're borrowing money to build a fire station. Okay. Vice Mayor?
Somewhat sabbatical, wouldn't.
I'll, I'll go around, I'll go around, come back.
You know, Commissioner Koulias is next.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I mean, guys, I have a simple philosophy, and I'll have you guys sit there and decide because I, I think it's one way. What's a more important project? Paying to move the electrical and water pipes off the Beckett Bridge area so we can actually get the county to start doing that work? Or doing the fire department, which we already have one next door? What's more important for the overall well-being in the city moving in and out? And as far as the dredging, we can piece out portions of the dredging at a time. We don't have to do it all right now, $5 billion. You guys see what it's like just to get the city hall with, with Pine Street and Hibiscus over there blocked off and Tarpon Avenue and Grove Street blocked off. So, and as far as the, like I said, the Stamis property, you know, Mayor, you came up with that loan idea for the 10 years, but the residents decided on it, and you guys still almost went against it. So all I'm saying is, I'm definitely gonna, if this goes through, I'm gonna make sure I, we try to get everything done that we can. And it obviously looks that way because this board went from, you know, the, the sky's falling on us before March to now we're just borrowing money left and right. So I get it, but some of y'all, you're termed out. You guys aren't gonna be around 10 years just to see the impact of this stuff. And, you know, I don't know if the city manager will do it, will be around for 10 years to see this stuff. So I don't like borrowing big loans. There, you guys talk about these projects in which we still have budgeted two, three projects a year. We're gonna take on this debt, which, yeah, it's still, one loan puts us right below the average of all the counties. So I stay firm in that. But the first priority is, is this Beckett Bridge situation over the fire department. I'm gonna say that because that's a main artery to the city. It's gonna take two years for that project to get done. Two, right, probably be three, with some change orders, too.
Four or five.
All right, so, and what are we gonna do? Have these stormwater projects going on within one year while that road's being shut down? And with some change orders in which a few of those projects may, may be budgeted within those two, three years? So I am skeptical, obviously, but, you know, I just, like I said, then we, then we talk about how I don't support the upper management getting these raises. I don't support the city manager getting a 15% raise. I, I don't support that right now. Not saying he's not doing a great job, but 15% raise or getting loans out, I mean, this is, it's much easier to work with like this in your first term. And, you know, this, this board talks about priorities, but show us all those projects, when they're gonna be done, the timeline it's gonna take. And we are borrowing money, not for the fire station. We're borrowing money for the overall CIP plan. So I think that needs to be corrected. And I also think if we want transparency, I would feel much more comfortable if the voters supported it. That's all. And, and I think when you write something like that, it's written in the most positive manner anyways. So they're gonna look at it and make that decision. And that's just the way I feel, and I'd feel more comfortable with it, too, moving forward. And I am gonna make sure we get our, our stuff paid for because to fix some stormwater issues, which the water's still gonna flood two times a year, which it shouldn't flood any, is a failure. And we gotta do it right if we're gonna do it right. So those are just my thoughts on it. I'm gonna not support it until I believe the residents make a vote on it to make me comfortable enough. Or if it goes through, then I'm gonna make sure we, we try to get what's in the best interest of the community. But that bridge is number one. That way we can decide what we're gonna do and let the county start doing their thing. Those are my thoughts.
Vice Mayor?
Oh my. So I have to clarify something. I wasn't one of them up here that was saying the sky was falling. I was here saying we're gonna be fine, so I just want to clarify that. I don't mind the borrowing of the money, and, and that was what I continuously said, as long as we knew what we were utilizing it for. And I know it's been said a number of times, if we do borrow the money, we're the ones that make the call of where, where it gets spent. I, I do think that we shouldn't be paying for the firehouse all in one year, even though now it's, it's, you know, financially accounted for. That's why when people buy homes, they buy 30-year, 20-year, you know, finance, mortgage. I think that we do have a great deal of projects that we need to get done. We all sit up here and we all get calls from all of the things that the residents want. Everything from we flood on every street to why can't we have a, a new rec center with a swimming pool in it? So, you know, we all get those calls. I, I just, I don't want to do reckless things with it, as Commissioner Koulas said. I, I would like to make sure that we're all very strongly in agreement to what is important and what's not. One of the things I, I differ with a little bit is I don't think we can do the dredge in piecemeal. It hasn't been done in, I don't know, 50, 60, it could be 70 years. I don't know if we've ever done that dredge on where it needs to get done, and we don't even know what it is. So I, I think that is important. I mean, the people that all live on there are all paying quite a bit more taxes than the people that are not living on the water, and yet they're not getting the full usage of their waterfront property. The Beckett Bridge, we have to move the water lines and be prepared for when Pinellas County, you know, can find the funds or the, whatever it is that's holding them up. But we have to be proactive and get that done first. And, and I know that there's quite a few other things. I know that we're gonna run into situations with Craig Park, and we still have no response or answer of what Phase Two is gonna be like. I, I don't, like I said, I don't want to take this money, borrow it, and, you know, haphazardly try to do a bunch of little projects and, you know, with the bricks are a mess on Orange. In my truck, I bounced down there, I think I'm in a milkshake. I mean, it's, it's just horrible. And, you know, that is a, when we do our first Friday, that's a street that everybody goes down. That, to me, is, is so important to do. But then again, we also have to be prepared when, and, and I don't know if everyone realizes, up here we do, when you pick up these bricks, it's not just pick up the bricks, relay the road, and, and put bricks back down. You have to change all the water lines, all the sewer lines, everything has to be done. So it's not just, you know, moving bricks. We, we have situations where we have to reline sewer pipes, make sure that they're draining in the heavy, you know, rains. There is a lot of projects, and I don't think that we have at $200,000 the, the funds, so we do have to borrow the money. I don't think that it's excessive for our ratio. So, you know, do I want to do it? I don't want to go into debt. I, I like to spend, I personally am a spend what I have type person, I don't borrow. But I think to be responsible as a city commissioner, you do have to, we, I don't know how we got so far behind in some of these projects, but we do need to move them forward because people, you know, could always say, they always say, hey, I'm paying a lot of taxes here in this town, and there's so many things that need to get straightened out. And, you know, as a commissioner, what do you do? You, you, you could keep throwing it at the city manager, but if there's no funds there to do it, we're the ones that have to just keep shrugging our shoulders and say, you know, it's, it'll get done when it gets done. So I am for borrowing the money, but I really want to see exactly, and I, and I know this board is gonna make good decisions on what it gets spent on, so that's it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Okay, unless there's any other questions of Mr. Herring? Thank you very much. There's an item number five miscellaneous, I'm not sure exactly what that is. City manager, do you have any miscellaneous?
No, we just put that there just in case.
All right, well, with that said, there isn't any commissioner comments or anything at, at the, at this work session? So meeting adjourned at 8:36.
I was right on on it. He's right on, I'm getting good at this. What did you do?
It goes back to again, that Jeff Larson I had 14 years ago, we could make predictions on when the meeting would end. And we'd make little stupid bets with the candies, passing the time, that's all it was.
You wanna see that? You wanna see that? Look at Dunedin, what he took out for that palace that the city all did. Absolutely ridiculous, absolutely ridiculous. Nothing wrong with that. You're, listen, you gotta pivot as you go, too. I'll see y'all next week. I'll see y'all next week. I swear you're like in your fifties, I don't know, there's something about you. I just think you're in your fifties, I don't know.